our floating homestead exemption. The purpose of the hearings will be to present information on the implications of the floating homestead exemption and to hear public input on the school board's pending decision regarding its single opportunity to opt out and as provided for in the constitutional amendment HR 1022, the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption. This hearing provides an opportunity for community members to share their perspectives and insights. We are here to listen, learn, and work together to make informed decisions that will benefit our school district. This is one of three public hearings required by Georgia law before the Paulding County Board of Education can finalize its decision. The procedures and guidelines for today's hearings are defined by Board Policy BCBI, Public Participation in Board Meetings, which includes rules of conduct for the meeting, public speakers, and attendees. At this point, again, I'm going to ask if there's anybody that has not signed up that wants to speak. There's a clipboard at the end of the counter, and you can sign up there. And I am going to turn it over to our board attorney, Mr. Tom Cable, to read you the procedures and guidelines for our hearing.
All right. Good morning. The procedures include, but are not limited to, the following. Individuals desiring to appear before the board must first complete a sign-in sheet and affirmation. Speakers will be given up to five minutes to make their comments. Speakers should address the Board of Education as a whole, not individual board members. The board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens, but will take them under consideration. However, board members and/or the superintendent may ask questions for clarification. Speakers should speak into the microphone and be aware that their comments may be broadcast, live, filmed, photographed, or recorded by the school district or other non-district media sources. Those unable to attend the hearing are encouraged to submit their written comments to the superintendent and the Board of Education through the office of the superintendent. And as the speakers come up, I'll be keeping time, so I will let you know when you get to the four-minute mark, I'll sort of signal to you that you've got about a minute left as you're speaking.
Yeah, and if we ask questions, we'll pause our time.
Yeah, and we'll suspend your time if someone does ask you a question and you're answering the question.
And if you've got something prepared and it exceeds that five minutes, you can, if it's something you've got in paper, you can submit that to Ms. Michelle Taylor at the end of the desk, and she will make sure that we get the rest of your comments. So at this time, I would like to turn our meeting over to our superintendent to give a presentation from the, from the board and the staff regarding the floating homestead exemption.
Good morning, everyone. I do want to start out by thanking James Stokes. He's with us this morning. He's our county's director and chief appraiser with the Paulding County Board of Tax Assessors. So I want to thank him for being here this morning. Of course, as Ms. Colette said, today is an important opportunity for the board to hear from the community about House Bill 581, the floating statewide homestead exemption. To kick off the meeting this morning, we thought the following two-minute video would sort of be a good launching point, so Michelle could start.
Hello, I'm Steve Barnett, Superintendent of the Paulding County School District. Last year, the Georgia General Assembly passed, and Governor Kemp signed, House Bill 581, which impacts property taxes for cities, counties, and school districts. The bill created a statewide floating homestead exemption that limits how much homestead property tax assessments can increase due to inflation. The bill required a constitutional amendment which passed statewide in November 2024. The constitutional amendment did two things. First, it created a statewide floating homestead exemption that caps how much homestead values can increase annually. Second, recognizing that a statewide exemption may not work in all instances, the amendment also gave local school districts, like ours, and other government entities the ability to opt out by following certain procedures, including, among other things, holding three public hearings for community input and a resolution of the local Board of Education to officially opt out. Here are a few things HB 581 and the constitutional amendment did not do. It did not remove or change existing state or local property tax exemptions, including our current homestead exemptions. Some of the required advertisement language has created confusion. To be clear, existing homestead exemptions are unaffected even if the school district were to opt out. It did not allow for more than one opportunity to opt out. This is a one-time decision that will permanently impact the school district. It did not change the constitutional requirement for the local Board of Education to provide a publicly funded, quality education for all children in the county.
So again, this morning, I want to thank Jay and his team, I don't know if Jay's in here or not, for putting that together for us. He was working with very limited talent, and so he did a good job with that. But, but again, the primary purpose of this morning is to listen to your thoughts and ideas, but as we get started, we want to share some key points to consider and show you where to access even more information. I mean, given this is such a complex topic and given some of the misconceptions and misinformation, especially out on social media. The introduction video is an example of the type of resources available on our website, and so I hope you did notice some key points in that, in that video. The first is that some of the required advertisement language, in fact, there it is at the top right, was not our choice, but it has created some confusion because it reads "opt out of homestead exemption." That, again, does not mean all homestead exemptions. Existing homestead exemptions are not impacted even if the board opts out. Again, the specific language in those advertisements was required by law, it was not our choice. Recognizing that a statewide exemption will not work in every situation, the amendment, which was approved by the voters back in November, includes the right to opt out for unique situations like Paulding County. There is only one opportunity to opt out. This is a one-time decision. It will permanently impact the school district, which is why it's important that the board makes an informed decision. Because this is a statewide exemption, it cannot be easily modified, even if it's determined at a later date to not be in the best interest of Paulding County. And again, the specific language of the notification was required by law, not our choice, and it reads "the Board of Education intends to opt out." Well, I'm speaking for the board here. The Board of Education intends to listen to the community, to get their feedback, consider the short and long-term implications, and then make a thoughtful, well-reasoned decision that reflects the needs of our students, families, taxpayers, the community as a whole, no earlier than February the 11th. So here is a look at where our resources are on our website. You can access it right off of our homepage, and there's just some examples there at the bottom of what's there. There's a link to a comprehensive presentation provided to the board back in January 14th, a copy of our January 9th press release, and a recently added frequently asked question. So as things come up, we just keep adding it to that list and put it out on our website. Another video on our website discusses potential collateral damage to our ESFLOST. Unlike other government entities, Georgia law prohibits local boards of education from participating in the new property tax relief local option sales tax, or FLOST, as it's come to be known. However, a FLOST, if approved by the voters, could still have a negative impact on the school district's ESFLOST collections. And we've listed a few of those issues up there on the, on the screen, but it's important to know that we only collect about 55 cents for every dollar collected by our comparable neighboring school districts like Cherokee Cobb, Douglas Barto. And so this could have, these, these could have a significant impact on us. And so one of the reasons, or one of the things we're concerned about is the erosion of ESFLOST collections, as residents may be incentivized to shop in neighboring counties with the lower overall sales tax rate. Additionally, if residents feel overburdened by multiple local sales tax initiatives, it could impact the passage of future SFLOST referendums, which is how we pay for capital projects and how we pay for our existing bond debt. So a decline in ESFLOST collections could jeopardize our ability to maintain a zero bond millage rate, which we fought hard to maintain over these years. In the appendix of the presentation today, which will also be on our website, we have calculated some examples of an average home in Paulding County with and without the statewide floating homestead exemption. We're going to pop it up on the screen just to show you. We're not going to go through it all, but it's, we're just going to show a little bit to you. The annual difference between those two methods, which is on the left and on the right, is about $60 a year based on the average, the average home value, and then, of course, the conditions we, we, we are assuming there. The board, it's important to note, maintains a comparable millage rate to the average large district in Georgia. We're below most of our neighboring school districts. In fact, we have the lowest M&amp;O millage rate in 18 years and continue to maintain, again, that zero bond millage rate. All that information's in the appendix. It also shows that the board has lowered the millage rate two of the past three years. And the examples in the appendix, again, there it is on the screen, you can look at it in more detail later, but, but the example out there shows that on the left is prior to those two millage rate reductions, which were equal to about $172 a year in reduction. And then on the right, it's easy, because if you're 68, at that point, you're 100% exempt. So that was an easy example. We also have two video resources on our website that explain how the statewide floating homestead exemption does not consider the unique circumstances of Paulding County, or that the inflation index itself does not capture the impact of all the things outside the control of the school district. So here's a few points from those videos. Due to the extraordinary residential housing growth in Paulding County and the composition of the county's tax digest, our school district is one of the largest, fastest-growing, and lowest-well school districts in the state of Georgia on a per pupil basis. You may not realize it, but we have 32,000 students and around 4,000 staff to support those students. The Board of Education cannot control residential housing growth in Paulding County. We can only react to it as best we can. Over the past five years, our enrollment has grown 6.3%. You see that there on the left. We are the eighth-fastest-growing large district in Georgia, the 11th-largest in size. You can see right beside us, Barto grew 4.8%. The average statewide over that time period was zero. Many school districts lost enrollment over those years. Other districts, you see to the right, lost enrollment during that period. There are examples of that. But the thing I wanted to highlight there is, for every home, we do gain around one student. It's actually .66, but we gain almost a student for every residential home built or added on average. Also, the Board of Education does not control home values or the limited commercial and industrial tax base in Paulding County. There at the top left, you see 86% of the digest in Paulding County comes from residential properties compared to an average of 65% in neighboring districts. Look at the, the top right there. What that means is we are missing a major piece of our digest compared to the average district, average local district. Almost a quarter of our digest's value are right at $3 billion. And the problem is growing. Other districts have a much larger commercial and industrial tax base, which is why the exemption will have a disproportionate impact on our school district. Barto County is a good example of this. There on the right there, Barto has a near-balanced digest, 52%, 48%, with 48% being residential, and the orange you see there being non-residential. And that mix is held for them as they have grown over the past five years. Remember on the previous slide, they've grown 4.8% and pretty much the same, the same mix there. Paulding on the left does not have a balanced digest, as I mentioned, and has more residential than the average, 65%, and far more than Barto's, 48%. Again, we are 86% residential, 14% non-residential, and this imbalance has grown over the past five years. The top left there, you see, five years ago, we were at 80%. Now, now we're at 86%. The local Board of Education only controls around 38% of our revenue through a capped millage rate. Ironically, as our digest grows more out of balance, we are also becoming more dependent on those local revenue resources. There on the left, you see, back in 19, we were at 30%. Today, we're around 38% there in the center in our mixture of funding, and then the statewide average there is on the right. So to put all this together, the Board of Education cannot control residential housing growth, which leads to more students, or the tax digest, which is missing about 25% of a, of a digest's typical value, both of which have a profound impact on our operations and our funding, and are completely out of the control of the school board and the school district. Essentially, I say all the time, we're the caboose on the train, you know, we're not the engine. Additional residential housing does increase property tax revenue for the district, but without any more balanced digest, the revenue does not fully cover the additional costs associated with the increased enrollment. So given our unique challenges, any decision about opting out of the statewide floating homestead exemption must be made carefully with a full understanding of how it could impact the future of our schools and community. The other video resource on the website highlights some of the potential long-term impacts of the statewide floating homestead exemption on the school district. And we're just going to highlight those, not going to go through them in great depth, but just wanted to highlight them. The first would be that we would be locked into a permanent adoption of a statewide, state-controlled solution, which could be difficult to modify later. Again, the local Board of Education only controls local revenue sources, which are around that 38% I mentioned earlier. The state's floating exemption would further erode their ability to, their, would further erode their already limited local control and shift it to the state. It's important to note, by the way, that unlike other government entities who have more diverse revenue streams and unlimited legal authority to increase property tax rates, Georgia law already limits and restricts the school board's ability to raise local revenue to 20 mils. The floating exemption will likely lead to higher property tax burdens in the form of rising millage rates. That's not unique to county, that's just, or to Paulding County, that's just a, an observation statewide. For numerous reasons, the exemption will have a significant impact on the long-term fiscal stability and operations. For example, it doesn't just impact local revenues, it will impact our state funding as well, which is an unforeseen difficulty with a bill related to Paulding County. The statewide floating homestead exemption is designed to control property tax increases during periods of rapid growth, but it limits our ability to recover from economic downturns or a decline in property values as seen during the Great Recession. So we provided a, just a quick example of that. We can see by this little snapshot here how the devastating, how devastating a prolonged recovery would look like, using, again, the Great Recession as an example. So all the way to the left there, our local revenue per pupil was 25% lower than the statewide average at the start of the Great Recession. Today, all the way over to the right, we remain 23% lower based on enrollment, that's an equivalent of $31 million shortfall. So we're roughly back to where, on an inflation-adjusted basis, where we were before the Great, before the Great Recession. That's primarily because the board did not increase millage rates to soften the impact of the recession on the school district. If this exemption had been in place, we would likely be 60% to 70% lower than the statewide average. So rather than 23% you see over there to the far right, we'd be closer to $90 million deficit, probably 60 million more than we are today. The spikes in '23 and '24 are hopefully anomalies. This year's net digest only increased 3.4%, but the inflation-adjusted compound annual growth rate through this cycle, this, this, this whole Great Recession cycle there you see, is 1.2%. It also increases our vulnerability to state funding shortfalls, going back to our list, including unfunded mandates and indirect obligations. You can click there, Michelle. It would reduce our capacity to fund local initiatives that support our students and staff, making it more difficult to address critical or emerging needs without relying on additional funding from state and federal sources. Two examples of that I would cite would be the school district has spent almost $12 million on safety and security over the past three years. That was all funded locally. The state has funded 1.5 million during that, that time period and offered additional one-time security grants. The district alone, using local funds, has spent around $12 million. Another example of a locally-funded initiative is compensation. To maintain the most skilled and qualified workforce as possible, especially when you're sitting next to one of the most wealthy school districts in Georgia, is a challenge, but the district has to remain competitive in compensation, and that puts more demand, again, on local resources. The statewide state-controlled inflation index could materially differ, be different than the inflation in Paulding County. And finally, long-term and far-reaching impacts of the legislation are just simply unknown because this, again, is a statewide exemption. Unfortunately, it could not be easily modified if it just impacted Paulding County, for example, negatively. And I'll just mention one more thing as, as we conclude, just on the expense side, I don't have a slide for this, but we have some information in the appendix that shows how our expenses have, have increased and how we compare to other districts. But for example, we expect our classified health insurance to increase another $5.8 million in next year's budget. That's expenses that have been shifted from the state that now must be paid locally. The board has no control over that, but that alone will exceed the roughly $5 million increase in local taxes this year. So it's a significant amount of money that, that we're going to have to fund locally. Again, costs like these are out of the control of the board, but they do put more demand on local resources. Other expenses like bus purchases, fuel, safety, security costs, they're all going to continue to rise. So again, please visit our website. There's a lot more information out there, and as Ms. Colette said, feedback is important to ensuring they make the best decision possible, one that reflects the needs of our students, families, taxpayers, community. So we encourage everyone to share their input this morning, and we look forward to, we're going to keep good notes, and, and anything that we hear is a question, we're going to, we're going to add it to our frequently asked questions on our website, so.
Steve, just want to make sure that we're clear. If you have a senior tax exemption at 65 or 68, this does not impact that. Sorry, sir. If you have a senior tax exemption, you will not be impacted by this. So your exemption will not go away if the board were to choose to opt out. I don't know if we made that super clear, but that was an important topic at the last hearing. A lot of people wanted to know how the senior exemption was going to be treated, and it is unchanged. If you have that exemption, it does not go away.
And one other thing, your regular homestead exemption for non-seniors does not go away either, and that will stay. I would like to point out too, and not to get into the Paulding County Board of Commissioners business, because they have the option to either opt in or opt out as well, but speaking of seniors, y'all need to be aware of one thing. If, if the county does not opt out, for example, you do not have exemptions from your county M&amp;O, which would affect seniors if they raised your M and O, which would affect seniors if they raised your millage rate later to compensate for not opting out. So y'all need to be aware of that, that that, that I have spoken to some of the commissioners who right now have indicated that they may just go ahead and opt in to, to, to make everybody happy, but that they will have to raise your millage rate later, and that would impact seniors. So I just want everybody to be aware of that. That, that's their thing though, so I'm not getting in, in the mix of their decision, but I do want our seniors to be aware of that and, and, and make sure that that's not going to impact you later.
We are now at the time for public participation. If you, if you came in late and you didn't get a chance to sign up and you want to speak, I know I've said this a couple of times, but if you want to speak, there is a clipboard at the end of this counter, so you feel free to step over there and sign up. I currently have a list of those who have signed up so far, and we are going to start with Mr. Roy Lee Strickland. If you will come to the podium, understand that you will be on video, so speak into the microphone. And again, just to repeat, if we stop you to ask you a question, Mr. Cable will stop your time. And at the end, if you have additional comments, give those to Ms. Taylor at the end of the table so that we can hear the full message.
Good morning.
I'm not sure I fully understand this. There's a lot of confusion in the county now of what is going to happen or may happen. The, do y'all have any idea what percentage of the counties are going to participate in what you're trying to do?
If you want to stop this time. We do not know because decisions have not been made. I think there are a few counties, I had heard that there were a couple of counties that have already made decisions, but until there is a vote, we do not know. We've heard lots of rumors, and especially when it comes to the Board of Education as to who may or may not opt out in the state.
Well, I'm, I just turned forty-eight, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty slow. I may, I won't be sure I fully understand. The way I interpret what these two gentlemen said, it will not affect elderly, it will not affect the, in other words, the, I'm.
Forty-eight, you got problems.
Well, you might just flip that around, and that makes a, makes a little bit of difference. But I'm, I'm blessed to be here, but.
I'm sorry, but just to make it clear, your senior tax exemption, as far as the school board is concerned, will not be affected whether we opt in or opt out.
Okay.
Senior tax exemption is taken.
Now, what, if I'm not a senior, what happens?
Then if you're not a senior, if the, the decision to opt in and opt out affects what your values, how your values can increase.
Okay. Well, see, you have no control over the values. This, this man back here does that, but it makes it, makes it tough for, for everybody. I've, I've been, one of the worst things I had to do when, when I was in office was the budget and trying to keep it down to help people like me or these people back here being able to afford taxes. And what, what concerns me, the, the people, the elderly that's on a fixed income, that will not affect it. That's, that's one of my main concerns. I want, I wanted to make that clear. The, 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 if it, it doesn't affect me, one thing I would like to suggest to y'all, which has nothing to do with this to a point, is how many of y'all go to Board of Commissioners' meeting?
They're at the same time generally, so we don't.
Well, you need, somebody needs to work together and change it so y'all can, can communicate. It was a problem back when I was in office. Nobody, nobody communicated or whatever, but it's very important. Y'all talking about big money, a big county, the county's growing like crazy. I moved here in sixty-eight, dirt roads, you know, whatever. And we didn't have a tax base when I was, when I went in office. We, we were broke, broke, and we had, had to do the best we could. It is tough, but like I said, the, the, the worst thing and the biggest problem I had was trying to deal with and making a budget and, and, and dealing with it because it was tough. You got no zero, you got zero, where do you start from, you know? So it's tough. But my main concern is, is most people still don't understand this. I, I talk to people all the time. I went to tax people, they didn't understand it. They, they said, come talk to y'all. But now, say I move in tomorrow by a house, what happens to me concerning this?
Well, we got the expert in the room. I should, I should shut up and let you speak. But essentially what happens, it resets. So the, the exemption does not go with the individual if they were to move. It doesn't, doesn't, we had that out on social media some, right, that they think that the exemption goes with the person. It doesn't. They also think it's permanent to that house, but it's not.
Oh, no.
There's a sale, it resets.
Yeah.
At that point. So it's a combination of the person and the house have to stay consistent, and it stays in place. Either one of those two things change, then it resets to the current market value and it starts over. So you can have one house paying a very different property tax than the house right beside it. It just depends on how long that resident has, has lived there. James, did I screw that up? You taught me well.
Well, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Again, I, I know where I'm at, but young people moving into county, are they going to be able to, to stay here, afford it, or whatever? Since we've got a, a new man in Washington and everything's looking a lot better, hopefully that things will, will turn around. But you never know. Somebody can pull the rug out Monday any, any minute and you got problems. So I feel for you, and I, I, all I did when I was in, you got to do the best for the county. Not, not you, or you, or you, or you. You got to do the best for the county, and it's tough at times. So I admire you for, for what you do and, or try to do, but the main thing is keep, keep in mind the people, all the citizens, no, no matter what age they are, to be able, they will come in the county and be able to live in the county and afford to live in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom, is it Klingon?
Mr. Klingon, as you get to the four-minute mark, I'll sort of wave at you and let you know you got about a minute left.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I just really have a suggestion. Having spent my career in a Fortune 500 company and looking at all the videos that you did and looking at the presentation, I had to laugh about death by PowerPoint or death by ac, death by acronyms. So it, it, it does get very confusing, and I think I'm echoing a little bit of what he said. I guess I would encourage you, if there's time to do it, to develop a very simple Q and A sheet to send out to county residents to try to take all of this and answer those questions. I live in a fifty-five and over community, and we're all old, so it takes us a while to learn stuff. But I think a simple Q and A would be very, very helpful in understanding what all of this means. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next, Mr. Ken Riley.
I'll let you know, Sid, when you got about one minute left, I'll let you know if you get to your time.
Fine, I think I can keep mine short. Good morning.
Good morning.
In fact, I have one question that I believe you may have answered already. I am, I turned sixty-eight last year, and when I talked to the county tax staff, that school tax exemption will apply this year because I'm, I'm sixty at the beginning of January. So that's correct, right? So that's the only question I have, so I'm done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chris Batchmore. Did I say that right, Chris?
Good morning. Thank you for your time being here, for those of you that have, have made it. And just a couple of things here. The people have spoken, you know, last, last fall, whatever the percentage, sixty or seventy percent said taxes are out of, out of control. And I think we know a lot of things post-COVID are totally different. Everything's more expensive, but, but in the board and the school system as well, just, and I know we talk about millage rates and millage rates are the same, but we can make numbers say whatever we want to say. When we look at valuations that come from the appraisers' office, the valuations are way up. And as I shared with y'all last, last year, I think the school budget is way up. Just over the last five years, back from twenty-twenty, the school budget's up one-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars, and we're only educating seventeen-hundred more students per year. So in twenty-twenty, the budget was two-hundred-ninety-six million, say three-hundred million for thirty-thousand students. Now it's four-hundred-and-thirty-three million for thirty-two thousand students. So the budget's gone up eight percent average per year, which is double that of inflation. And I know things have gone up, but the people on this side have said, man, that's really high. We've got to do something about it. Now, is this bill perfect? I think they may have gone to the extreme. It could be better. But I think you realize when you, when you poke the bear, eventually he's going to wake up. Nationally, they did that, and there's some changes. Now, whether they're all going to be good or not, I don't know. But as a board, I think if anything, you need to realize that in twenty-twenty-three, the budget was up twelve percent, twenty-four, twelve percent, twenty-five, eight and a half percent. If I'm wrong, Mr. Barnett, let, let me know, but I think I've got those numbers right. If these keep going, if you poke the bear and they replace you with some crazy people that say, we're not going to pass the budget, there, there can be an extreme, and neither one is better. So I think you need to watch your expenses. This, this past year, the budget was up thirty-five million dollars and only had about five-hundred more students. Why did it cost thirty-five million more dollars to educate five-hundred more students? I know there's certainly security, and we need to incur, make sure our students are safe, but we've got to watch things and not just give all the money you can. I mean, Mr. Barnett can do the best he can for, but you're balancing the public as well. So from what I understand, the price of rental homes and businesses, the valuations will still go up, so there will be some increase there. I think four, five thousand homes are bought and sold, so the, the value of those is going to go up. I'm not sure about deflation. It says the values will be tied to the inflation, and maybe our assessor could say, in a way, homes, not, say my home went down from three-hundred thousand to two-fifty, would I still be taxed on the three-hundred thousand and maybe one percent inflation that happened? Because in two thousand eight, there was some inflation. So would the values have really gone down in the Great Recession? I don't know. I hadn't seen anything on that. So I know you are here to prepare all students for success, and that's great, but how do we define success? Y'all only control some of that. Some of it comes down from the feds, and I'm not sure it's all good. Some of the behavior in the classroom needs to be dealt with. I don't know how y'all can handle that. Maybe you need to look at some ideas. I see extra teachers in classroom to deal with kids that are at a behave, you know, behavior problems. I don't know how these teachers do it sometimes. You got to engage the parents, you know, and then.
You got about one minute.
Okay. And then success, if these high school seniors are graduating but borrow eighty thousand dollars to go to college, did we teach them successfully how to look at money and, and budget? So we need to look at, at success there. So, so anyway, I did watch the videos from the June fourth, from the January fourteenth meeting, and something was mentioned about a DA goals and objectives. And I think Mr. Barnett was talking about if y'all vote to opt out, that y'all would almost try to comply with the intent of the law and look to make sure you hold the taxes down. And I appreciated that insight, that maybe y'all are realizing, hey, the homeowners are, we just can't keep spending money. So that would be good if you could do that, but I don't know that we can trust the board and the superintendent, not just keep this eight, twelve, fifteen percent increases you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Barnett and the members of the board. Thank you for your time today. Thank you for your service, your job that you do. I stand before you today from a position of disappointment, frustration that we're even here having this conversation. As you recall, November twentieth, this county, by a majority vote of sixty-three percent, elected to pass HB five-eighty-one. They also on that same day elected to replace, or to reseat several of you to this board. They did that out of a place of trust or represent within your respective district. To be clear, as I stand today and speak, my wife and I have always been and will always be in support of a strong and healthy, healthy school system. We have both served and or still serve within the school system of this county, albeit and sadly enough that we've had to remove our kids from it. So here we are today with a decision to make that I hope will be made with integrity, honoring the vote of your constituents, and not as, not at the pressure of our county or school leadership. This is not a time for a yes-man vote or an opportunity for a pat on the back. This decision has far-reaching impact beyond today or beyond this year. For the last thirty years, I've lived in Paulding County. For the last twenty, I have owned a house and paid taxes. Taxes that I've had to appeal the majority of these years due to unfair practices and taxation, coupled with increased rates that far exceed inflation. Thirty years ago, my family left Douglas County. Shortly after that, you know the history, the county began to shift rapidly. Political alignment shifted, and as a result, crime is high, taxes are higher. I may not be the smartest man in the room today, but I'm smart enough to know and to see that we're headed in the same direction with the elected officials and higher leaders who can't seem to budget, plan proactively and budget accordingly, who are hungry for other people's money to reach deeper into their pockets to get it. Taxation can't be the only way, we know, in this county. Understandably, growth in the residential building is out of your control. I understand the numbers. I understand the tax digest. I've studied it, and I think we felt as a county to support you in the growth through corporate, through corporate entities within this county. So I understand this doesn't all rest on your shoulders, it preceded your time and lies out of your control, but we can't continue in the same direction. I speak today on behalf of long-term and faithful homeowners in this county, not the transient community living in these corporate-owned communities that our economic development and planning and zoning salivate over. From the eyes of the businessman and financial professional, it would seem in the best interest of this county, if that's what we're truly about, that we'd be working across tables with these entities to try, to try to, to create a plan that's for the betterment of this community. We can't keep going backwards trying to balance budget by ways of unaligned astronomical tax increases. That's what this bill does. It protects us not only under the current leadership and political alignment, but God forbid, should we keep creeping more and more to look like Douglas County politics. We all know that hasn't worked very well. We can say it's just sixty dollars per household if we choose to opt out. That's easy to say when your salary is three times the average household income in this county. But it's not just sixty dollars, because for the last fifteen to twenty years, the average increase in value and corresponding tax has averaged over ten percent. Nowhere is it right for government to be outpacing the economy at this level. It's not time to opt out of a statewide bill that passed both chambers and was signed by the governor as a means of avoid, of avoiding truth and taxation. Additionally, I find the claim that this bill has not been vetted enough and tested enough, so the results will have unknown long-term and far-reaching impacts that we cannot see insulting. I find it that way because that wasn't the thought process in twenty-twenty during COVID, when our opinions took a very political stance. Your decisions didn't consider then the unknown long-term and far-reaching impact in that season, as we see the results today in our society and right here in our own school system. So that lacks, that creates a lack of trust in the ability to make educated, informed decisions based on the nature of these decisions and submission to those opinions in seasons past. The only thing in common in that season and today is money. So in closing, no, I'm not asking for a seat on this board. I had that conversation in the past with one of your members. However, I am committed to doing my part to hold accountable those who were elected and those hired by elected officials to represent the very people who reside in your districts and who are affected by your vote. Be mindful today and in the days ahead that this vote was given to you as a sign of trust to proxy vote on behalf of me and the sixty-three percent of citizens who alike voted for this bill to pass. So today, my prayer for you is that you would not only make an informed and educated decision, but also a prayerful decision through the lens of stewardship of the position you were elected to serve and from a place of integrity to represent the people who elected you to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to be honest, I'm having a hard time reading this. I think it is Michael Skelton or Shelton?
Chicken scratch.
Chicken scratch. So sorry. Michael, Michael Skelton.
Skelton, yes, ma'am.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you here and having the board at the meeting. Mr. Barnett, thank you for the informations out there. Now, I'm a simpleton. I have to jump around there and try to figure out, so if my figures are wrong, please correct me, because I, I want to, want to be right. If by all the calculation, one mil for us represents about seven million dollars, is that, I mean, round about, not that.
Seven, eight, yeah.
Yes, but seven. I took that from that if, on equalization, we're putting in thirty-five million, and that's, so I divided that by what, we had to put the five, five mil in to participate. Now, there's a cap, I understand, at twenty mil. We're at seventeen sixty-two.
We're at seventeen sixty-two per mil on this. Does that affect equalization at all if we go to the higher? So so when we say that we reduce, and again, I'm not chastising, but I'm just this truth when we put out to try to put the confidence in. So us reducing a millage rate, they're saying that we've lowered a millage rate. When the values go up, realistically, we're still getting more money. Our taxes went up, but it's still on just the fact that we were able to lower this and still still get to the budget side. When I hear that part of it, that that's what gets me a little bit frustrated now and then, way back when. It's the gentleman that spoke right here with the sixty-three, sixty-four percent of pass passing of HB twenty-one. But there was also, at the same time, a pass that gave in the fact that you are to evaluate this and to look at it for this. So as sixty-three, sixty-four percent, we also pass the fact that you get to review this and say whether we're in it or not as we've elected G N. And I I know that you're taking a great deal of time and looking looking at this and trying to consider. We promote that we're on zero bond millage rate. Does that have anything to do with tied into the fact that and on our ESPOLOs that we have? Is it that designated, a portion of that designated for the bond side? So we're able to get it through the sales tax to to get this, right? Okay. All right, now, does if we do a bond millage rate, if we put that on there, does that affect anywhere on the twenty mil cap? No.
That's an M and O, it's an M and O cap.
Right, M and O cap. So the bond rate, we can still tie in even though we've tied it to eat to the ESPOLOs and put this. And that was a selling point, I believe, with the ESPOLOs that we came in that made it advantageous. And then, as we turn around and look, and by my reading of this, a lost, we we don't gain any of that money. It goes strictly to the county. And they can raise that at a point zero five, I think, up to a one percent or to the one cent if I if I've read read that portion of it. And there's a whole lot of other ties that go to that as well, what who's opted in, who's opt out. What's the top on a bond millage rate? Is there a cap on a bond millage rate that can be applied to this?
That's a good question. I don't I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't think there is. Yeah.
Okay.
There is.
All right. So so out of stewardship, we got this through an ESPOLOs, and we said of the selling that people buying, purchasing, coming into our county. But now, we have a ties on here, and we're looking at it. Wait a minute, they're going to go across the line. If the county opts in and puts that one percent in to be advantageous, they're they're going to go across. They're going to go back across the line to shop and and cop. So we're again, as the gentleman said earlier, figures can be moved either way to to make that settlement. And as I'm a simpleton, we put it, we put it back down into here. Austerity cuts. Since eighty-five, one hundred and forty-eight million. I do the average out, so I'm getting eight point seven million a year. I know that's not the way it came. It's it's more drastic other times. You know, but that's still one mil on average. So if we turn around and add that into what we've got now, that's eighteen sixty-two. So really, we're only looking at one point this before you go back into the other millage rate. Some other questions were answered as to where I've getting into this. You said equalization's impacted on this.
Yeah, oh, it is, absolutely. We didn't we aren't to what degree yet, but it will absolutely have.
Okay, all right.
This is about one minute.
Well, thank you. So impacting how so our equalization comes into where we're our wealth, and we pay into this to get monies back. So some of that money is coming back to us. But is it because of our millage, current millage rate and our bond rate and our ESPOLOs, all these things that we've done? Is that what qualifies us for the equalization?
It does.
And the amount of money that we're gaining per?
It does. It is it's a complicated formula. But it also involves our place with other school districts. You're all sort of competing for this fine amount of money. So it's our placement in that group is a big influence on it.
Thank you. Mine was primarily that's coming back in to get my clarification on numbers and and alternatives that are had that's that's last to get this. Again, I appreciate it.
Mr. Skelton, before you walk away.
As long as you didn't take my minute. I'm teasing you, sir.
So I I just want to make sure you understand that if we were to add a bond M and O and we collected money to pay the bond millage rate, which I think we're using about twenty-five percent of the money now to pay of of ESPOLOs, to pay something like that. It's about a quarter. Getting the confirmation.
It was approximately that when I looked.
So we 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 collect ESPOLOs through the sales tax. We spend about twenty-five percent of that money to pay the bond debt that the school district owes. Okay? We do that so that we don't charge you a bond millage rate. Okay?
Yes, sir.
What we cannot do, to make clear that you understand, is to put a bond millage rate on the taxpayer and then take that twenty-five percent and shift it somewhere else in the budget. We cannot do that, right?
Yes, once it's established on the ESPOLOs, anything in there has to go there.
That bond M and O and that ESPOLOs can only go to capital improvements. It can't pay for teachers. It can't pay for buses. It can't pay for, well, no, I guess it could pay for buses. That's capital improvement. But but things like labor, cafeteria workers, ancillary services, it can't pay for any of those things.
Yes, sir.
So just so everybody understands, I'd love to be able to shift some things around and be able to use some of that ESPOLOs money as a as in in a personal way. But at the end of the day, we can't do that by law.
Yes, and I appreciate.
We cannot, we also cannot participate in the loss.